Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 17th, 2014. If you all please rise for a brief end location to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the city council meets in regular session, we are ever mindful of the power of Mother Nature and the weather that has surrounded us for the last three or four months. We are ever so thankful for the quality of public works, employee and the public safety employees and all the city employees who have jumped into the fray on a repeated basis and done such an outstanding job of keeping our streets and our communities safe in this rather challenging year. Tonight, as always, we are mindful of wanting to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them. Tonight, we ask for guidance and understanding and vision as we discuss the various issues on the agenda before us, knowing that each and every member of the city council is here with their heart in the right place and their desire to do what they feel is in the very best interest of the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Sharone, would you read us the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Kirk, could please call the roll?
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
ATAC?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanzet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Alderman Holman is absent. Sam?
Here.
Vasiliyan?
Here.
Sarone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected members of the city council are present in account for this evening's meeting. Have we heard from Alderman?
I just got a text from you, Camps, about this meeting, so I can't remember.
Okay. Alderman Holman had indicated earlier that he was going to try to attend the meeting via phone, but apparently he's not going to be able to. All right, moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Do we have anything this evening? Okay, moving to item number five, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Sparks is chairman of governmental services. Would you present this, please?
Thank you, your honor. Consent agendas as follows: to accept and place on file: A) The joint committee of the whole minutes for January 28th, 2014; B) The historic preservation commission minutes for January 27th, 2014; C) January 2014 building report; D) The 2013 budget transfer; Approvals: E) February 14th, 2014 payroll, an amount of $770,803.39; F) The accounts payable check register, an amount of $3,561,436.87; G) The city council minutes for January 21st, 2014; H) Ordinance 14-11, approval for Gaetano's Batavia Liquor License and Overlay Package Liquor; I) Ordinance 14-14, amending the City of Batavia zoning code; J) Approval of the Class F liquor license for Elderly Center; K) Resolution 14-15-R, dedication in part of East Wilson Street; L) Ordinance 14-13, amend Title III, Chapter III of the Batavia Municipal Code Regarding Liquor Control; M) Resolution 14-16-R, authorizing execution of a master services agreement with Huff &amp; Huff, Inc.; N) Approval of the Class F liquor license for Water Street Studios. Propose we accept consent agendas thread.
Second.
Move by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agendas presented. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll?
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Consent agendas approved, thirteen yes, no no's, one absent. Moving to item number six, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anything this evening? Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is presentation of the Main Street Minute. Austin?
Good evening, everyone, and another happy snowy day here in beautiful Batavia. Presenting the Main Street Minute is my privilege this month because we've done a lot of great stuff in January as most of the Midwest was hibernating. Main Street was active, making our downtown a better place as the heart of our community. In January alone, we had eighty-one Main Street volunteers donate over one hundred and fifty-seven hours for planning meetings, programming, and other events in January. Pleased to announce that Hardee's is scheduled to open up sometime in mid-March, so that'll be exciting. And Main Street had three business retention visits with downtown businesses. Also, some of the successes we'd like to share, Scott Silvati, who is the owner of Lighthouse Marketing and a Batavia resident, so he's got his business in town and lives in town, has decided to join the Main Street Board. He brings a tremendous amount of marketing and promotions experience, as well as a strong drive to work within the community that obviously he lives and works in. We're absolutely thrilled to have his type of talent on the board and feel it'll be a great addition. Also, Art in Your Eye is going to be brought under the Main Street umbrella for 2014. And I've sat in on the Art in Your Eye meetings, and I can tell you, it's a very exciting time for this festival, which brings a tremendous amount of people to downtown. This year, a lot of changes will be implemented to help grow and show new faces to make it happen. We have event coordinator, JMF Events, that's going to help co-produce the festival. We're talking about trying to get a series of art installations put around town a month or two before the event, almost like the Bulldogs previously, where people would come down and get a map and be able to go check out the artists and vote for artists as kind of a ramp up, a lead up for Art in Your Eye. And then there's going to be a lot of interesting and really exciting events that'll take place during the festival. Looking ahead, we continue to program for, you know, a lot of programs and events for our community, and we'd love to have people join. One of the things that makes this town so great is people are always willing to roll up their sleeves and jump in. And we have a couple opportunities coming up that we'd like to mention. Wednesday, February 19th, there's going to be a Green Walk Planning Meeting at the Main Street office, an event with local food, live music demonstrations, and activities and partnerships with the Park District, the Community Garden, and the Environmental Commission. This committee, which again is on Wednesday, February 19th, is looking for people to help out with marketing and publicity, volunteer coordination, exhibitor coordination, logistics, entertainment and activities, and alternative transportation show, which I'm not exactly sure what that is, but I'm sure it'll be exciting. Also, a volunteer opportunity for anybody interested, February 23rd at 7:00 p.m. at Gammon Coach House, which should have a lot of people interested in going, is the Cocktails in the Park meeting. And this is a really exciting committee that for the past couple of years has really put a unique and definitive experience that is uniquely Batavia in downtown. First year, it was Cocktails on Clark, and then the last two years has been Cocktails on the Park, which is located in absolutely amazing park right behind City Hall here. That's a fun, very fun fundraiser and outdoor event. And February 23rd, which is Sunday, at 7:00 p.m. at Gammon Coach House is the next meeting. Anybody who's interested would be delighted to have you. We're also lucky to have such talented community. If you're interested in getting involved in either of these two events or any of the other events that Main Street puts on, you can contact Main Street at (630) 761-3528 or www.downtownbatavia.com. Tonight's my privilege to introduce the Business of the Month, which is the Elder Day Center, which is a comprehensive adult day program for socialization, recreation, and health maintenance, located at 328 West Wilson Street. Elder Day provides adults, provides services for adults 55 and better. And I can tell you, I've actually toured their facility. It is an amazing facility, and I've got to see firsthand a lot of the things that they do, and they've got an incredible story. So here to tell you more about Elder Day and their programs is their executive director, an absolutely wonderful woman, Tracy Eggleston.
Good evening. If everyone could have introduced me like that, I'd be a very happy camper. I am actually a native of Batavia myself, grew up on the west side and back here in Batavia, serving the community that I love. So it is a privilege to be here in front of you tonight. I also want to thank you also for approving our upcoming liquor license for our fundraiser, which you all have an invitation for, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but I'd like to share a little bit about our program. Elder Day Center began in 1990. Originally, it started in St. Charles and moved its way to Batavia. We've been in our current Batavia location for eleven years now. And predominantly, what we do is we serve senior citizens, maybe who have a little bit of dementia, aren't quite ready to go into a facility placement, or want to stay in the community that they love. We can provide, from the moment you walk inside our door, there's a therapeutic reason behind every activity that we do. From pouring a cup of coffee in the morning and going over the daily news through the end of the day where we'll start walking and helping reduce some of that anxiety that's associated with the effects of the sun going down and upon dementia. We have intergenerational programming with Batavia Nursery School. We do music, pet therapy, as well as seated yoga. We go on field trips and outings. You may see our bus about town every once in a while. We just really try to engage with a quality of life, and that's what we're about. In addition to our day program for senior citizens, we do provide caregiver support. And through a grant with the Illinois Department on Aging, we are able to provide free individual counseling, support groups, and training and education for caregivers. So these could be working adults that are just adjusting to having mom or dad live in the home with them, or they're taking care of a spouse and wondering how the changing roles are affecting that relationship. They're stressed out, they don't know where to turn, and these are things that we can provide right here, and that's of no charge to any resident taking care of anyone for that program, sixty and above. And they can be throughout the whole county. So it's a tremendous resource. It's a way for us to give back to a community that has been shaped and molded by our residents and who've dedicated their lives to a better community. We are having an event on March 8th. You all have hopefully received one of our invitations. We're having what we're calling our Moon River Mingle. So this year, it's kind of a 1920s vibe, and this is a very important event to help us raise needed funding for our program. We only charge our clientele, our members, less than 50% of what it actually costs to run the program. So we are very dedicated to making sure that this programming is available to anybody in the community who does need it. We are having, it's a wine and beer tasting and a silent auction, and all of that will benefit our program. So I hope you all will be able to make it out. It's going to be held at Interiors for Business. If you would like to reserve tickets, please give us a call. Our number is (630) 761-9750. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your good efforts on behalf of the people in the community. Thank you very much. Okay, moving then to item number eight. You've got a memo, I believe, all were sent from myself. Let me find my memo here. For appointments to the Batavia Tree Commission and the Batavia Environmental Commission. And I would like to, at this time, make the appointment of Carolyn Burnham of 531 Viking Drive in Batavia to the Batavia Environmental Commission, replacing Diane Peterson, who resigned because of her move to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Somebody make that a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
No.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
That one is approved, twelve yes, one no, one absent. And the next one would be to the Batavia Tree Commission, and that one I'd like to appoint Kathy Vranik of 1147 Hanover Drive. She replaces Chuck Ziegler, who was on the commission and who passed away.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Brown, second by Stark. Any discussion?
Your honor, yes. I just, with my no vote, it's not about the person. I'm sure Carolyn would do a fine job, as would Kathy, especially being a certified tree arborist. They've both come highly recommended by the city staff. My only concern is with the process. And so I just oppose to the process right now, so I'm going to vote no.
Any other comments? Kirk call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
That one's approved, twelve yes, one no, one absent. Okay, moving to item number nine, which is ordinance 14-10, amending the City of Batavia Comprehensive Plan. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, your honor. This, you've all got the memo on this. It started out several months ago when staff started working on updating the comprehensive plan, and as you all know, the comprehensive plan represents policies in which the city council is to address regarding the physical growth of the city. There's been many meetings on this. I think there were at least nine meetings, public meetings on this. It started out a plan commission, went on the J-Cow. You can access, anybody that's interested can access all these meeting minutes on the website. It essentially just updates, as it says, it updates the comprehensive plan, changes, mostly does some housekeeping, changes some language, refreshes a little bit what we want things to say and how we want things to happen. And of course, it needs to happen periodically because as time goes on, things change, ideas change, and lifestyle changes. So that's the reason for the requirement to have the ordinance updated. This was passed on to J-Cow by the Plan Commission. J-Cow reviewed it, and it was a recommendation by the J-Cow to pass it on to city council with a positive recommendation. I move to approve ordinance 14-10.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Vasiliyan. Any discussion?
This is two.
Kirk call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
No.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
That one's approved, twelve yes, one no, one absent. Okay, moving to item number nine, which is ordinance 14-10, amending the City of Batavia Comprehensive Plan. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, your honor. This, you've all got the memo on this. It started out several months ago when staff started working on updating the comprehensive plan, and as you all know, the comprehensive plan represents policies in which the city council is to address regarding the physical growth of the city. There's been many meetings on this. I think there were at least nine meetings, public meetings on this. It started out a plan commission, went on the J-Cow. You can access, anybody that's interested can access all these meeting minutes on the website. It essentially just updates, as it says, it updates the comprehensive plan, changes, mostly does some housekeeping, changes some language, refreshes a little bit what we want things to say and how we want things to happen. And of course, it needs to happen periodically because as time goes on, things change, ideas change, and lifestyle changes. So that's the reason for the requirement to have the ordinance updated. This was passed on to J-Cow by the Plan Commission. J-Cow reviewed it, and it was a recommendation by the J-Cow to pass it on to city council with a positive recommendation. I move to approve ordinance 14-10.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Vasiliyan. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
That one's approved, twelve yes, one no, one absent. Okay, moving to item number nine, which is ordinance 14-10, amending the City of Batavia Comprehensive Plan. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, your honor. This, you've all got the memo on this. It started out several months ago when staff started working on updating the comprehensive plan, and as you all know, the comprehensive plan represents policies in which the city council is to address regarding the physical growth of the city. There's been many meetings on this. I think there were at least nine meetings, public meetings on this. It started out a plan commission, went on the J-Cow. You can access, anybody that's interested can access all these meeting minutes on the website. It essentially just updates, as it says, it updates the comprehensive plan, changes, mostly does some housekeeping, changes some language, refreshes a little bit what we want things to say and how we want things to happen. And of course, it needs to happen periodically because as time goes on, things change, ideas change, and lifestyle changes. So that's the reason for the requirement to have the ordinance updated. This was passed on to J-Cow by the Plan Commission. J-Cow reviewed it, and it was a recommendation by the J-Cow to pass it on to city council with a positive recommendation. I move to approve ordinance 14-10.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Vasiliyan. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
That one's approved, twelve yes, one no, one absent. Okay, moving to item number nine, which is ordinance 14-10, amending the City of Batavia Comprehensive Plan. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, your honor. This, you've all got the memo on this. It started out several months ago when staff started working on updating the comprehensive plan, and as you all know, the comprehensive plan represents policies in which the city council is to address regarding the physical growth of the city. There's been many meetings on this. I think there were at least nine meetings, public meetings on this. It started out a plan commission, went on the J-Cow. You can access, anybody that's interested can access all these meeting minutes on the website. It essentially just updates, as it says, it updates the comprehensive plan, changes, mostly does some housekeeping, changes some language, refreshes a little bit what we want things to say and how we want things to happen. And of course, it needs to happen periodically because as time goes on, things change, ideas change, and lifestyle changes. So that's the reason for the requirement to have the ordinance updated. This was passed on to J-Cow by the Plan Commission. J-Cow reviewed it, and it was a recommendation by the J-Cow to pass it on to city council with a positive recommendation. I move to approve ordinance 14-10.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Vasiliyan. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
That one's approved, twelve yes, one no, one absent. Okay, moving to item number ten, which is ordinance 14-05, the Walgreens redevelopment agreement. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, your honor.
Wait a minute, Alderman Vasiliyan, do you want to?
Thank you very much, your honor. I'll be recusing myself from this item and the subsequent two items. Thank you.
Alderman Brown, sorry.
Thank you. Okay. This is a rather lengthy document everybody's got in front of them here tonight. It's a result of a three-year process, I guess we could say, of negotiations between city staff and the petitioner, which is Batavia Enterprise. There's been many, of many, of many, of meetings, public hearings, meetings with Plan Commission, zoning board of appeals, on the J-Cow, back to city staff, back to J-Cow, back to city staff, and many meetings between attorneys and the developer and staff. The end result is the document we have in front of us tonight. It is, as the mayor said, ordinance 14-05. It's an eighty-some page document, so I can't possibly hit all the highlights on it, but for the public, I'll try to hit a few. Some of the most controversial issues, I would say, with this development would be the setback from the city right away out in front, drive-through, and the amount of parking spaces, and the amount of money that the developer has requested. City staff has done their due diligence and analyzed. By the way, the money would be coming from the TIF fund, so there are many requirements that are required to be used for this money out of the TIF fund. Staff has done their due diligence, along with the city attorney, and find that the extraordinary costs that have been identified by the developer are eligible for the TIF funding. There is additional money that the developer has asked for out of the TIF funding, and staff has not recommended that amount of money over the $850,000 that they can say is an eligible expense out of TIF that can be reimbursed out of TIF. The other expenses are eligible expenses, but not necessarily an amount that they feel is worthy of the TIF expenditure. So that came back then to the joint committee meeting, the entire city council, to discuss and have a philosophical, I guess, discussion on that as to whether or not the council thought that the project itself was worthy of the additional money to be expended out of TIF in an assistance to the development. That got battered around quite a bit, back and forth, and I'm sure there's some people on the council that are not going to be in agreement with this entire packet we have in front of us tonight. like to make a motion to amend ordinance 14-05 to read as follows. Under section 1-04, grant of easements by developer, I'd like to add language at the end of the paragraph, which states, "Parking within Lot 2 and Lot 5 as depicted on Exhibit J, overlay exhibit of the Potavia Plaza subdivision Platte shall not be reserved by developer for the exclusive use of tenants, employees, and tenants, customers within Potavia Plaza subdivision, but developer shall also allow same to be permitted for the parking of automobiles by the general public as space is available, though subject to the reasonable rules of the developer, including but not limited to requiring no overnight parking, no parking of trucks, and no other large vehicles, and no storage in containers or otherwise of equipment or property." So this is, it's tweaked a little bit from Friday when I worked with our city administrator on this, and he, I know Bill worked with Kevin on the language that Bill and I talked about. And then Potavia Enterprise worked on it with their attorney and kicked it over to me, and then kicked it over to Bill. And of course, you know, they need to protect their interests. I think we need to protect our city's interest, our city, you know, residents' interest. I certainly understand that they want the language in there that they've put, where, you know, the trucks and other large vehicles, you wouldn't want this to be something like a Walmart where you can park an RV there and set up a camp and spend two, three nights there, you know. So I certainly understand their concern with the language also. So I make that in the form of a motion, and I ask for a second.
Second.
Moved by Brown, second by Wolf for the amendment to ordinance 10-5 for the granting of easement by developer for parking. Any discussion? Alderman Sparks?
I need clarification. In this document, in the index, it says Exhibit J, but within the document, we have an Exhibit J1 and an Exhibit J2. Unless my eyesight's gone, you can't even read these documents. You can't tell which lot's what on here. You know, Exhibit J1, I can't even read it. Is there...I'd like to know which lots this amendment covers.
I think if you look at Exhibit J, the second one where it's listed as Exhibit J Continued, that's the one that's in there for parking easement areas, and that specifically shows out Lot 5, Lot 3.
And what is 5A? For Lot 5, that's just...
I think it's Lot 5 as depicted, is the way it's written.
And what are the boundaries of Lot 5?
I look at the parcel, oh, it says parcel 5 now with the arrows to the lines. Looking Lot 2 and Lot 5 adjoined to each other, so to me, it's the entire parking along First Street.
It's not clear enough.
I mean, it's not clear enough. Lot 2 and Lot 5 are identified on J-2.
By what boundary lines? Just where the numbers are? Lot 2 and Lot 5?
Well, it's all in the, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's all in the legal document of the subdivision of Platte, right?
Yes, and Lot 2 is basically a small area that's directly south of the drive-through and goes to First Street, and then Lot 2 is the property, or that part of the parking lot that is east of that and goes to Shumway Street and up behind the post office. So any of the parking, basically any of the parking, east of the driveway and south of the Walgreens drive-through is lots 5 and 2.
What about the parking spots west of the Walgreens?
Not included.
Not included. Can you give me a review on what property on that block has a parking easement right That it's required to have public parking on it?
There's an easement for the spaces basically in front of the plaza, so in front of, you know, along Wilson Street, the spots that are north of the building, and our, the property that the city currently owns, which would be, well, let's say two-thirds of the way down from Wilson Street in the middle of the Walgreens building, down to the south, currently has a public parking easement on it.
So the only part that does not have a parking easement is the far east lot, which is...
Correct.
Lot 2, basically?
Basically Lot 2.
So in this re-subdivision of all this property, we're retaining some of the parking as public, but we're giving up in front of Walgreens in front of the plaza. And the parking in front of the Walgreens is where I've had a problem all along, because from the beginning, Walgreens was going to have their own parking. And this doesn't protect that parking, so that parking can be closed off to just Walgreens. Correct? Anybody?
There's nothing in the agreement that prohibits Walgreens from making it be Walgreens Customers Only. That isn't what was represented to us, but it's not in the agreement.
I, when this amendment was presented, I was, I was off for it. I'm like, you know, good, at least if something happens, you know, there's still going to be parking downstairs, downtown. I mean, we can always, you know, in the future, we can always release easements if something's to be built south of there and a parking garage or something like that. But I think public parking's important, and I don't think this amendment is covering enough of the lot there, so I can't support this right now.
I mean, I just think it's, can we get some sort of verbiage that protects the public parking? I mean, that's, I don't understand why that wasn't put in. I know we got a good faith from the developer, but like you said, Dave, 10 or 15 years, 20 years from now, we're all gone, and something could happen to the public parking downtown. We're already losing spaces, so we need to protect what we can protect.
Well, let me ask the developer if he could possibly come up to the podium here and answer this concern.
Good evening. Austin Dempsey, 141st Street. My colleague Dan Stilato, 141st Street. I can tell you that it is my intention that in 15 and 20 years, I'm still here. So hopefully all of us are as well. Well, geez, we've talked about parking an awful lot, and, you know, I know staff's recommendation, and Bill sat here the last meeting kind of defending the fact that, at the end of the day, this is a retail shopping center, which means by default, people need to be able to drive their car down, park, and walk in. In fact, one of the main reasons why enclosed malls are failing all across this country is because people don't like to walk around as much. People come, they park, they shop, they leave. In some cases, they'll cross-shop. You know, it's our intention with every one of our properties, but especially this property, because it's a retail shopping center, to have a commercially viable shopping center. If cars start getting towed, if cars start, you know, if people start to believe that the perception of their vehicle being safe is no longer a reality, people will stop shopping there. And then Panera and Walgreens and Daddy O's and Great Clips and The Laundromat, and everybody else that we put in there is going to call us, and they're going to be the first ones saying, listen, we have to have the ability to have our people feel that the perception of parking is there. Now, we can certainly get into specifics and talk about, you know, the loss of parking stalls here or there, and, well, I don't think that's probably conducive. All we've asked for, or I guess what the staff has asked for, is parking spaces in a public easement that will benefit property owners that, even though they don't own the property, that we will own and pay taxes on, they can receive a benefit from being able to allow their customers to park there. Kluber, Bob Masterson, the people at the old City Hall, Burt is the Word, which is why staff, and again, as Dave Brown mentioned earlier, hundreds of hours working on, trying to figure out where the best spot is. We orientated the parking there. Furthermore, sometime over the weekend, we were notified that there was a suggestion to additionally put some language in there, which is in front of you today, which, again, we're sitting here saying, okay, you know, it's our intention to have a commercially viable shopping center, and so we agreed to lots 2 and 5, which, again, number of parking spaces eludes me in the exact point, but it's over 50 spaces. But, you know, there's, number one, there's no need. Number two, if we start to restrict parking in front of the existing Walgreens Shopping Center, not the new Walgreens Shopping Center, but the existing spot, we can run into least challenges with releasing that anchor space. It's 12,650 square feet. And the last thing we want to do is have a retailer think that there could be a bunch of people parking there, or, you know, McDonald's decides that they want to park their employees there because McDonald's is so successful. You know, we need to make sure that it's, we have the ability to keep that shopping center commercially viable, as with every retail developer out there.
Thank you. Spark, start.
When I got your memo, Dave, over the weekend, the first thing that came to mind for me was, this is, will be private property. The City of Potavia's not going to plow it. We're not going to insure it. It's going to be owned by Potavia Enterprises. And let's say there's a public event downtown, which has never happened in that shopping center that I can ever remember, but let's say it's a super-busy weekend, and they need to restrict parking to just people who are shopping at Walgreens and going to Panera and going to Daddy O's. I have a hard time saying they can't do that, because we're trying to make this a public parking lot, which it isn't. It's private property. So I don't know, I mean, I think that the fact that they were agreeable to this new language should be good enough, and I don't know why we're beating this horse further. I think that for them to restrict the parking on private property any further than they already are is awfully nice of them. So I think that we should pass this and move on.
With all due respect, Austin, to Potavia Enterprise, I know you have good faith, and I know you're looking for the best, but what happens if you sell the Walgreens building down the road? If something happens with the company and you sell that, then all of a sudden, you're going, you know, it could be with a company that's going to throw tow signs in there. The same with the Plaza, you know. Right now, we're giving up an easement on there as you're subdividing this all up, you know, and overall, we're losing easement parking places, I believe, you know. But we have to look forward, you know, towards the future. We have to look to see what could happen here, you know. And if we lose these easements on these properties, they're already there now, you know.
As Bill mentioned at his, you know, in one of his conversations, you know, we're giving up an easement to a parking lot that's only parked by people that are exclusively Plaza shoppers anyway. And you're getting an easement that allows not only Plaza shoppers and other customers in the area, but also adjacent property owners. I mean, it's the best you can possibly get. You're, you know, even this current situation right now, technically, people have to walk through a private parking lot to get to another lot and park their cars, and you think anybody's doing that today? No. You know, in 55 years, standing solid by a record that we're not towing. I mean, the city, the people that are going to be using these lots, absolutely no one is going to feel any different than they feel today.
And I respect you for that, but there's no protection in there for the future. I mean, if it's not that big of a deal to you, why couldn't we just add that, you know, keep that easement on the front lot?
Well, it is a big deal, because we're not, I'm not willing to restrict or create any barriers to entry for us to go out and try to find another retailer or somebody to come down here and put their claim, their anchor, flag in downtown Potavia. I want to make sure that whoever I bring in at some point in time knows that if there's a parking problem, we have the ability to go out and protect that field of parking. And I probably should have indicated this earlier, the 35 spaces, 34, whatever the number is for Walgreens that's part of Lot 3, at the end of the day, that's all going to be open for public too. Walgreens is only going to have the ability to put up, you know, 15-minute parking here, or possibly they're talking about putting in a couple of electronic car charging stations. So there's not going to be, you know, as long as we retain, sorry, as long as we retain ownership of that and the agreements, you know, they're going to, whatever we sign today, or whatever we sign when we get our document, are going to be enforceable for 25 years regardless of who retains ownership of that. That, you know, generally, anybody who's in Potavia that wants to come down and shop at the Potavia Plaza can park absolutely anywhere on that site, period.
We thought that the movement for lots 2 and 5 was strategic. We took a look 30,000 feet from above Potavia, and we said, the buildings across the street from Lot 2 and 5 that we don't own, they deserve to have some additional parking. We felt that was an easy transition, therefore the wording seemed to flow. We start dealing with the spots in front of Walgreens, who really would need to park there? And we use this phrase, I think, when we were talking a couple of meetings ago, and I'm not picking on anybody across the street, but if a manager of one of the businesses across the street decides that to free up their parking, they're going to come over and park in our lot all day and then go get their car in the end of the day. We have to, we didn't think there was any need for additional public parking in front of the Walgreens. Most of the people there across the street have their own parking fields. And so we thought the move was strategic to bring the public parking more down to that southeast corner, shaped like a hockey stick, so we've endorsed that phrase. So lots 2 and 5 together, we thought were closer to the people who needed the parking that were not part of our business.
What you're doing is you're designating those places as public, and you're saying the other ones are public. And I understand the need to, you know, restrict somebody's business from across, I understand that, you know, and that could be done. But like you just said, Austin, you know, if you get a big change into the old Walgreens building or something like that, you've got to be able to have an option to keep public...
No. I mean, I guess in theory, my crystal ball's fuzzy. I guess if, you know, the greatest Harrods from London wanted to come down and have 15 dedicated parking spots, we'd try to figure something out. But, no, it's a retail shopping center. You go to the lifestyle malls, you go to Charleston Mall, I'm thinking of malls out there, any mall, you know, there's no reserved parking spots there. It's retail. People want, park at the first available parking stall. They walk in, they shop, they go. That's exactly what it is. You don't see, it's not common, at least, to see, you know, Best Buy or, you name the retailer to put five spots right in front that says, you know, this is exclusive for this customer only. It's a retail shopping center. People park and they walk in there. It's part of keeping the development commercially viable.
Your Honor.
As I said, we've had a lot of meetings on this, and there's been a lot of conversation and a lot of this type of conversation. I made my motion the way I made it, and there's been a second, so I would ask for a roll call.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf, for the amendment to ordinance 10-...
14.
Oh, excuse me, ordinance 14-5. Kirk Hallerow?
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Attack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Okay, the amendment is approved. 13 yes, no-no's, oh, excuse me, 12 yes, no-no's, two absences. Okay, then we would move to ordinance 14-05 as amended.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've pretty much explained what ordinance 14-05 is. We've just passed the amendment, so I would move for approval of ordinance 14-05 as amended.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of ordinance 14-05 as amended. Any discussion? Alderman O'Brien?
Dave, you had said in your preamble that there was a land swap. Could you...
Well, it's that piece of property, like Bill mentioned, that we own in the center that is now going to be turned over now.
So it's just our piece of property?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the land swap?
I didn't, yeah.
Okay, so it had nothing to do with any land that...
You're right. We're not technically swapping. We're, that's part of the package, yes. Good catch.
Any discussion?
I guess I'm not done. I do have to get some comments out. I cannot support this resolution, this ordinance. I just think we paid a sum of money to a firm, Hyundai Group, to walk us through all of this. They came in with a recommendation, and we didn't listen to them. I just think the money gets kind of high. We're depleting, and I know that this should possibly, with the EAVs going up, that this will, you know, add to the TIF, but what they're putting into the TIF, they'll be pulling out from the TIF. I think we're mortgaging our future for our downtown. Just an observation again on how the whole process went for three years also. I mean, we have ordinances in place that kind of reflect the comprehensive plan, which was a vision for our city. And, you know, a lot of thought went into that. I mean, not by, say, this council, this present council, but by past councils, on and on. And, you know, variances are important because it gives us some flexibility with our ordinances. But the developer came forward with, I think, nine, 10, 11 variances. There was a bunch of them. They went through a lot of plans, and they put a lot of effort into it, and I get that, but our staff put a lot of effort into it. And I guess because they're representing, to some degree, Walgreens, there was absolutely no give on the developer's part. It was always the City of Potavia giving to make this deal go. I mean, there was no quid pro quo. And, you know, then the threat came that Walgreens is going to leave. I mean, it's not good to negotiate with threats. And there was absolutely, for my money, there was, for the City of Potavia, no negotiations. It was just strictly the developer getting the developer's way. And I applaud the developer. I think they're a good company. They're very responsible in Potavia, and I've supported them in the past on a lot of issues. But I just don't think this one ordinance is beneficial to the City of Potavia. And it's come out, people have come out in the past in last meeting, and, you know, we need Walgreens. Well, Walgreens has been pretty successful in Potavia. They've made a fair amount of money. I mean, history is, when they came in, you know, we lost some pharmacies, so if we didn't have a Walgreens in our Potavia, what would we have? I mean, if we didn't have a Walgreens in our Batavia, what would we have? I mean, I, I know Batavia Enterprises is very, they're very bright people. Austin's a very bright young man, very, very talented, very successful. And his, his job is to go get people to fill his spaces, and you do a good job at that. So, if Walgreens was to leave our downtown without us just giving everything to them, and then the deal didn't go through, I believe Wal, Austin would be very successful in filling the space, getting another deal. I don't think the city would just fall apart because Walgreens left our town. And I just think some of us have been operating like we need Walgreens, and, and people in the public are coming out saying, we need Walgreens, we're, we're going to fall off into the ocean. I, I just don't like to see the, the city and the residents being backed up, and so I, I, for the money reasons, for the variances, I mean, the whole vision of our, of our comprehensive plan was sustainable health. I mean, it was this try to make it a pedestrian, we, we made a vote two weeks ago that supported just that, making us more pedestrian-friendly town. And so, I mean, we just, we're not consistent in our vote, and, and I, I know this is probably something I'm going to lose, and if I do lose, I don't lose. Michael O'Brien does not lose this vote. The city of Batavia, the residents of Batavia are the losers here. It's not me. And so, I know people thinking that, that there's a big argument or something with Batavia Enterprises and Michael O'Brien, I guess. You guys know it's not true, I know that, and so, just for the public consumption, it's not true. I, I wish them every success, but I just wish Batavia more success. That's why I'm here. And, and I just, I, I just hope we all keep that focus, and, and if this does not go through, Batavia Enterprises, and I hate saying that, I mean, they'll, they'll be successful, and I want it to go through, but I, I honestly wanted them to give a little, and they gave nothing. And so, I, I just cannot support this. I don't think it's good for our city.
Your Honor.
Alderman Brown.
I just need to comment, Mike. You and I have had many conversations on this, and, and I respect your opinion and, and I understand it. And I understand why there's some things you don't like, you don't like the setback, you don't like the parking, I understand all that, and I, I respect that. But I do want to just come back at you a little bit, just so that the public that is listening, if they were to listen what you just said, what you just said was the city of Batavia laid down. And we did not do that. If we had, there wouldn't have taken hundreds of hours of negotiation and staff time to do this. There was numerous things that staff worked hard on and, and almost got up and walked away from the table when Batavia Enterprises wanted one thing and we wanted another thing because staff was trying to do the best thing in the interests of the city of Batavia. So, I just, without getting into all those details, Batavia Enterprise didn't get everything they wanted, maybe you didn't get everything you wanted, but we didn't just lay down. And as far as listening to the, the consultant that we hired that recommended or that stated that the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars was something that he could, he could back up, I do believe that we did listen to him. We all listened to him, we all understood what he said, and that's when it came into a console philosophical discussion as to whether or not we thought the additional money over the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars was something that was important to the city of Batavia.
Okay, well, sorry, Dave, but I did not mean any affront to our city staff. I think staff did take this long because they did work hard on it. I, I think some, I, I just think the present council didn't give it enough, and, and I don't mean to, I'm not attacking anyone, and I don't mean to be that way, but I honestly believe staff did do their due diligence, absolutely. And I think Batavia Enterprises could have given us more, okay? And, and, and I just feel we got backed into a position where we put a ton of money and effort into this, as did Batavia Enterprises, and, and it would just be, I don't know the, the, the term to say, but to just let it slide is, is somewhat counterproductive, but I still don't think it's a good deal for the city of Batavia. But after all this time and money invested, it would be a shame to let it go, but I, I just, I just, I cannot support it.
Your Honor.
Alderman Wolf.
Thank you. I have to disagree with that, Mike. I think that it's not whether we win or lose for Batavia, it's moving the city forward. This is what the public wants, this is what the business community demands for a building to be there, whether it's Walgreens, CVS, any other pharmacy that would want to move in there, they're going to want a drive-through. The community demands a drive-through, whether it's on Randall Road or whether it's downtown, that's what they want. Our dream of a downtown with our downtown master plan has not materialized in the way that the dream was presented to us. You know, I've been here since that came out, and we've virtually done nothing out of that master plan because that's not what the community wants today. I know we want it to be, you know, pedestrian-friendly. I am extremely happy with the things that we have done with the streetscape projects and the way things have turned out, and I have to say, I think they did give a lot in this. They wanted a million and a half dollars, they're not getting it. We wanted to give them eight hundred and fifty thousand. We're in the middle of that. So, I think it is give and take, and I think it is a good thing for the city for us to move this forward. I think it's time for Dave to call the question.
Alvin, ATAC?
I really would like to see Walgreens stay in Batavia, there is no doubt about that. But I, I agree with, with Michael said, you know, I think the community wants Walgreens, I think we all want Walgreens. It's just the structure of the proposal that I can't support for many of the reasons that Dave, I mean, that Mike outlined, so.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor for the approval of Ordinance Fourteen Dash Five as amended. Kirk Colerole.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
No.
ATAC.
No.
Stark.
Yes.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
No.
O'Brien.
No.
Callahan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
That vote is eight yes, four no, and two absent. Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item number eleven, which is Ordinance Fourteen Dash Sixteen, approving variance, variances for drive-through parking at one twenty-two West Wilson Street. Alderman Brown.
That's exactly what it is, Your Honor. Without taking any more time, we all know what it is. I'll move for a motion, I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Fourteen Dash Sixteen, approving the variance for a drive-through at the Walgreens that we just approved the RDA on.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, Second by Alderman Stark for the approval of Ordinance Fourteen Dash Sixteen, the drive-through variance, uh, variances for drive-through pharmacy at one twenty-two West Wilson Street. Any discussion? Kirk Colerole.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
That one's approved, twelve yes, no-no's, two absents. Moving to item number twelve, which is Ordinance Fourteen Dash Seventeen, approving variants, variances for drive-through parking at one twenty-two West Wilson Street. Alderman Brown.
That's exactly what it is, Your Honor. Without taking any more time, we all know what it is. I'll move for a motion, I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Fourteen Dash Sixteen, approving the variance for a drive-through at the Walgreens that we just approved the RDA on.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, Second by Alderman Stark for the approval of Ordinance Fourteen Dash Sixteen, the drive-through variance, uh, variances for drive-through pharmacy at one twenty-two West Wilson Street. Any discussion? Kirk Colerole.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
No.
Callahan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
That vote is eleven yes, one no, two absent. Before we leave that subject, as the mayor, I would just like to say that now that we've kind of got all this over and over the dam, so to speak, I, I would publicly like to, number one, commend our staff for what I think has been an excellent job of trying to, as you've already intimated, work through this. This has been a three-year up and down, through the loops and over the falls, and, and really the staff has done, I think, an extraordinary job of trying to work through a lot of difficult issues that confronted themselves. Secondly, I'd like to thank Batavia Enterprises and Walgreens for their interest and their commitment and their due diligence on our community. When we approved this tonight with Batavia Enterprises, the Batavia Enterprises has been with our community since nineteen sixty, if I do my math, that's about fifty-four years of commitment to the community of Batavia through three generations, some of which are no longer with us. But we have two generations in the audience tonight, and I think they, this, the commitment that they have shown to our community and their interest in redeveloping our downtown has been a, a staple and something that really has helped us gain to the ground that we've got to today. So, I publicly want to thank Batavia Enterprises for their efforts in trying to help Batavia kind of realize a broader dream here. And finally, I'd like to thank the city council, and while, as obviously we've just heard, there's been some, some heavy debate and discussion, I appreciate the, everybody who's raised an issue. I think we've all gained from those arguments and, and the discussion that's taken forth, and it certainly has sent some, caused all of us to stop and think about what it is we are approving and what we did approve and what we didn't approve and what we changed as this game progressed. And I think the community of Batavia and the project, at the end of the day, is a much better project because of the debate and the give and take and the cooperative spirit that Batavia Enterprises and Walgreens has shown to the city of Batavia in trying to make this work. And this was a struggle, it was something that, you know, I hope we all walk away from this as better aldermen and better city officials and better business people because we know that at the end of the day, if we're really, our hearts are in the right place, and I think all along, that has always been the one benefit we've had here, everybody's heart was trying to do what was best for the community of Batavia, that at the end of the day, we really, hopefully, have put together something that a few years from now, when the dust settles and it's all clear, people will think that, well, Batavia didn't do a bad thing here. And the fact that we were able to attract major U.S. retailers like McDonald's and Walgreens into our downtown is kind of a magic moment that I will tell you, I've had other mayors into Batavia walking around, visiting, and they'll say to me, how in goodness' name did you get Panera Bread, Walgreens, McDonald's into your downtown area? We can't even get them near our downtown. So, I think these all speak some moments of wonder that we've been able to accomplish. And while, you know, there's some difficult moments here, and there's some angst on the parts of many of us as to things that were or were not accomplished, at the end of the day, I think we all learn from it and we make Batavia a better city because of it. So, I thank you all for your cooperative spirit and the willingness to stand up and speak your opinions and vote your conscience and voting the way you did, and at the end of the day, we did get the job done as far as what Walgreens hopefully will be here for another fifty years in our downtown. In our cooperative spirit, maybe we'll see the fourth and the fifth generations of Batavia Enterprises and the Dempsey family in our community in the days ahead. So, gentlemen, thank you very much for your spirit of cooperation with the city of Batavia.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Vassilian has rejoined the meeting.
Let the record reflect that Alderman Vassilian has returned. Okay, we are going to go to item number thirteen, which is a motion for the appro, for approval for the city of Batavia to join the regional transportation authority's sale lawsuit as a plaintiff, and this is regards to the sales tax sharing agreements and the issues that are before us, and this is at a critical, critical juncture because the Illinois General Assembly is going to be rewriting some legislation in the near term based on a, on a, on a Illinois Supreme Court decision that's just recently come down that has ruled some of the shit sales tax issues that have been out there as unconstitutional. So, I would just like to see the city of Batavia joining this lawsuit because I think we have some things that we need to be, let the world know that we feel very strongly about.
Need a motion on that?
Please do.
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, Second by Alderman Wolf, that the city of Batavia go on record as joining the regional transportation authority in their sales tax lawsuit as a plaintiff. Any further discussion? Kirk Colerole.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassilian.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, twelve yes, or thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Thank you for that vote, I appreciate that very much. Okay, next, item fourteen is a motion to call for a special joint committee of the whole meeting for February twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen.
So, move.
Moved by Alderman Vassilian.
Second.
Second by Alderman Callahan. Any discussion?
Seven or seven thirty?
Seven or seven.
Seven. Seven thirty is the normal meeting time, I think people are used to that, and I think it would be worthwhile to mention, since this meeting's televised, why we're having this additional meeting.
It would be, as I understand it, it's kind of at your request that we do this to have a presentation about the electrical utility and the issues that are before it and potential fees we may or may not charge in the future.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
And we do have a commitment from VATV volunteers will come and set this up so we can televise that meeting as well.
Great, thank you.
Even though it's not a regularly scheduled meeting.
And we want to encourage people to come to this meeting, that bring your questions not only about potential rate increase, but about, you know, the history of, of our relationship with Prairie State and where we stand moving forward so that we're as transparent and available to the public as possible.
I guess I would like to ask on behalf of the staff, because we've been discussing this, if any of the members of the council have specific questions that you may have, if you'd kind of give them to us a few days ahead of time, so maybe we could incorporate your questions into the presentation that they would make and be in a position to give you viable answers to whatever it is you may ask or ideas you may have. So, please feel free to let us know any thoughts you might have. We have a motion, second, for that, for that special meeting. Kirk Colerole.
Vassilian.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
know, it's part of a process to try and have a, a conversation about the, the proposed rate increase, at least proposed by the staff. And that, and because a lot of the reason for that is our relationship or our contractual obligations arising out of the Prairie State, the Prairie State project, it's important for people to have an understanding of that. I don't believe that Monday night is going to be, you know, the be-all and end-all, and I don't think there's gonna be the discovery, discovery of any kind of silver bullet or anything, but I think it's important to talk and for people to understand. So to that end, we have a, on the front page of the website, we have a little space that indicates that you're conducting this, initiating this dialogue. We have a couple of memos, some FAQs up there now, we'll have more FAQs up there tomorrow or the next day. If we're, we'll try and have our materials for the presentation up before Monday night so that people can have some understanding of what it's about. And people also can click on a link on the website and send questions into us. We do have a citizen, we have one person who has responded and asked us several questions, so we'll be answering those. And any of the questions we get, we'll put the answers right on the website so people can learn as much as possible. And I think that will certainly continue through past Monday, it will continue through the council's, you know, conversation about a rate increase that we think will go through the month of March. And as far as I'm concerned, it could stay up there forever in terms of a educational thing because Prairie State is going to be with us for a long time. So in terms of what the staff has been doing, you know, half the staff is involved in nothing but the weather right now. Public works, police, fires, certainly police calls go up, their normal calls don't go down, fire calls don't go down at all. We have a lot of people working out of position to help with the weather. Other people, for the people who aren't involved on a daily basis for that, we're working on the street program. As you know, we are, we've received some significant IDOT grants, so we're starting to work out a multi-year street program to make sure that we spend that money wisely. This Mon, this Wednesday evening at the Plan Commission will be the draft recommendations arising out of the housing study, which we are doing in partnership with Geneva, St. Charles, and North Aurora. And so I think that will be, that'll be very interesting. And other than that, we're preparing for Monday night's meeting, and that's basically it. We're working on some economic development agreements. I think you have one in front of you tomorrow for Aliano's Restaurant, and we have some others that we'll be working on letting you know about shortly. And that's, that's basically it tonight.
Any questions, the administrator? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports, community development. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things to announce. Tomorrow night at the J-Cow, February 18th, CDC will be discussing the sale of the city property known as the Tomley property. That's been in front of us quite often, and there's further discussion to be had, so that's what staff is gonna be bringing to us tomorrow night. Wednesday, February 19th, the Plan Commission will be meeting, as, as Mr. McGrath mentioned, at 7:30. And there's a couple items on their agenda, design review, zoning ordinance text, and then the homes for the changing region, the draft recommendations on that. The next J-Cow, February 25th, we've got a couple items on that agenda. One of them is the zoning map approval and discussion about cannabis-related land use restrictions. So we'll have those discussions, and then we also have further discussion about Houston Street. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
That's enough.
Community, our public utilities, Alderman Clark?
We have two things on tomorrow night's J-Cow meeting. Water meter purchase, and there will be an electric rate discussion only. Peggy Colby has some financials, she's gonna present on that. And then, moving forward, there'll be something, the meeting is for February 24th, of course, regarding the electric rate discussion that we just voted on. And then there is one more item on the February 25th meeting for tree pruning contracts, so. I'll be busy. Thank you.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night on the J-Cow agenda, City Services has extended police eligibility lists, police vehicle purchases, and Westside landscape contracts for 2014. And I would ask if Alderman O'Brien could present those, because I probably will not be here until about 8:30. Thank you.
Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one item. It is tomorrow, February 18th, the TIF agreement with Alianos, that's all.
Okay. We have other business tonight from anybody? All right, going to 18. I brought in this trophy because I wanted to show you, there were two of these trophies today, and they're basically identical. And I was out to the Jewel this morning, representing the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry. And the idea was, is that State Representative Stephanie Kiffewatt, Kiffewitt from Aurora came up, and she was representing the Aurora Food Pantry. And the Kane County Farm Bureau came in and announced that, or they, they had proposed this, that they would, as they have done in other years, they would pay for the representative and I to wander the Jewel and as much groceries as we could put in a basket in five minutes, they would buy and donate to our respective food pantries. So the Aurora Food Pantry and the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry, I represented them. They, both of the food pantries sent their designated representative to kind of run with us, and we had backup people with backup baskets following us around, along with the press. And they turned us loose, and I think at the end of the day, they granted another minute, so it ended up being six minutes that we ran around the Jewel and threw things into the basket. And I was proud of myself in that even at my age, I was able to fill, I believe, five baskets full of stuff in six minutes, only in aisles four through six, if you're familiar with what aisles those are at the Jewel. And so we got up to the cash register, and I think I had $1,229 in groceries, and Representative Kiffewitt had $1,260 in groceries. So she beat me, I think, by $33 in groceries. But we both got the identical trophy, and it's, it's the traveling trophy, so I get to keep it for a year, but then next year, they invite two other public officials to come in and run the Jewel or run some grocery store someplace and raise this for the respective food pantries in the area. So the Batavia Food Pantry seemed to be very pleased this morning that we were able to get that much stuff out of the Jewel for their stocking of their shelves and distribution to their clients. So that's what that's all about. It's just, any of you who aspire to be the mayor, this is what you get when you get this job, is you never know what crazy job you're gonna be asked to do, but running the Jewel, which was, was kind of fun, but I, I will tell you, when I was done, I was breaking out in a pretty good sweat from running around the Jewel, throwing all this stuff into the grocery baskets. So that's what $1,229 will buy you at the Jewel temporary trophy that you get for a year, which is fine. But it was, it was a fun thing, and it was a good cause, and I was more than happy to do it. So I was pleased to be able to do that. Trying to think if there's anything else I wanted to share with you tonight. I guess not. Then we will entertain a motion for executive session for the discussion of purchase and sale of electrical power.
So move.
That's all right.
I'm sorry, who moved? Who made the motion?
I made the motion. I don't know who's second.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman Stark for the council to enter executive session. Kirk, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?